So tonight, we're going to start with the Frostburg State University Physicians Assistant Program presentation. We have Carrie McMahon as the interim director of Physicians Assistance and Mr. David Benel is the coordinator. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us. Really appreciate this opportunity to present to the commissioners and to the community members as well.
So let me get us started off here. I wanted to start by really honoring a member of the community who without him, our program doesn't exist. And he so deeply cared about our community that he approached Frostburg State University and challenged them to be able to create a PA program. And he was with us every step of the way, right to the end. And we were always focused on local in the region, and anytime he thought we weren't, he let us know. And I'm really grateful for that accountability and that legacy that becomes part of our DNA of what we have. And part of what you're seeing, of course, is him and his wife. We had our first graduation of our first cohort, and we were able to donate to the Holy Plunge, as well as create a Dr. Sean McCaffrey Award in his name for people who were dedicated to the region. The first winner here is PA Travis Miller, who just graduated. He is from this region. He was hired by Precision Orthopedics, and his plan is, wife is pregnant, his plan is to live here, buy a house, and spend the next 30 years taking care of Allegheny County residents. And that's really what we're about, is recruiting locally so people stay. And I just want to start at some basic things about, you know, what are we about as a community? What is a PA? So we're medical professionals who diagnose illness, we develop and manage treatment plans, we prescribe medications, and often serve as patient's principal healthcare provider. Thousands of hours of medical training that we provide. PAs are versatile and collaborative. PAs practice in every state, every medical setting and specialty. We improve healthcare access and quality. Somebody has once said about my profession that we are the undifferentiated stem cells of the medical world, meaning that we can become what is needed. And that was true especially during COVID, when surgical PAs were put in critical care units because they knew how to run ventilators. Or primary care PAs were able to run the COVID tents because they were able to be able to move in those directions. And that's our broad generalist education. This is a picture about a month ago of our first cohort that was graduated. And just some background on our education. So we have a comprehensive educational program to prepare PAs for team-based approach. We don't practice independently, we practice with teams and with physicians to provide high-quality, patient-centered medical care. We have a general's medical education where PAs receive makes the profession uniquely flexible to the evolving needs. So we're not training people just for the needs of today. It's what does Allegheny County need tomorrow, and where are we at there? My example is that I had done cardiothoracic surgery for a time in Washington DC VA, and then worked in cardiology. So I was able to make those changes because that was the needs of that community. Just some short background of what it looks like to be in our program is it's a two-year program. First year is in the classroom, and the second year is out in clinical rotations in the community. And our PA curriculum is very similar to medical school curriculum. So what are we about? That's our profession, but ultimately, what are we about here locally? And we are here to educate a PA workforce committed to excellence, compassion, patient-centered care, to medically served, medically and well-under-served carriers of Maryland and beyond. We're really working to create providers for this community. And I'd like to pass it on to my colleague Carrie McMahon for the rest.
So a big part of getting into PA schools is very, very competitive. So again, having a program at Frostburg State University, which is actually centered at the USMH campus in Hagerstown, is really a special thing that we don't take lightly at all. So you'll see the progression. We now will be, we have just started our third cohort, and you can see the number of applicants to our program and how that has grown over time as we have gone through the accreditation process. So in general, based on the statistics, an applicant would have a 14% chance of getting an interview with our program. We interview 100 applicants, and a 3% chance of getting into our program, which is really reminiscent of national statistics. So getting into PA school is a really difficult task in and of itself, even the best qualified, just based off of the number of seats that are available, which we have 25 seats in our program. In any given cohort, we have 25 that are in their didactic year and 25 that are in clinical rotations. So it's a really rigorous application process and process to get into PA school. So why might you care about that in Allegheny County? Well, all of your applicants to our program get an immediate interview. So they don't have to compete with the rest of the country as far as getting an interview. So any applicant from the four counties, Garrett County, Allegheny County, Washington County, and Frederick County, automatically gets an interview in our program. The additional pieces is that we have a holistic admissions process. And so additionally, in getting an, after getting an interview guarantee, those students or those applicants from Allegheny County are also getting additional pieces to their scoring. They're getting, they're getting a point for being a Maryland resident. They're getting a point for being from the four counties. They're getting a point because maybe they graduated from a local institution. We are really dedicated to recruiting and educating students from Allegheny, Washington, Garrett, and Frederick County, because what we know about those students is that they're going to land here to practice. They're going to land here to buy houses. They're going to land here to educate their kids here. They're going to land here to buy cars here. They're going to contribute to the economy here, in addition to contributing to healthcare, to the healthcare needs of Allegheny County residents. So these are our current partners, clinical partners in Allegheny County. These are where our students, in the second phase of their education, are landing for clinical rotations. These are typically four-week rotations, in which they gather additional knowledge. They're able to walk alongside other PAs, physicians, nurse practitioners, and continue to gain knowledge in clinical settings. And so what is our ask, and why would you care about this? Well, of the 25 students that, as Dave mentioned, we just graduated on May 17th last month, 10 of those students have signed contracts locally. He mentioned about Travis Miller from Rawlings being one of them. There are nine others that are going to land here, folks that never thought that they would come to this region and actually stay here. We have a student from Iowa that literally just signed a contract with a trauma surgeon at Meredith's Medical Center. We have a student from Massachusetts who is now going to stay locally. So what happens, and in the article you read in the Cumberland Times back on March the 27th, it was very obvious that if students rotate and get a feel of this community, they want to stay. They fall in love with it. If they're from a metropolitan area, they fall in love with the landscape of this area. They fall in love with all of the outdoor activities that this area has to offer. And so they end up staying in places where they rotated. They get job offers. It's essentially a little mini interview for four weeks, that these providers get to kind of test our students out and see if it's somebody that they would want to work with. And that's what's happening. That's what we're seeing come to fruition with our program. Students coming to us from all over the country. Another example, Oklahoma City, she's just signed a contract with the General Surgery Practice in Hagerstown. So people from all over the country coming. What we need, and what our ask is, and how you can help us, is to help connect us to clinical practices in this area. What we need is additional clinical rotations. And what that will help the patients and the residents of Allegheny County do is it will help to fill the gaps that are currently, that currently happen with healthcare providers. There's a huge delay of care with the Allegheny County residents. Because there just aren't the providers to see those patients. So what happens is your residents then go to Morgantown for care, or they come to Hagerstown for care. And so what we want to do is help fill the gap of healthcare providers in this county for the Allegheny County residents. So our ask of you is to help us to grow in the number of clinical sites, so that we can bring students who will then stay as healthcare providers. We'd love to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to the program and the new health sciences building being up and online eventually. And, you know, it's a growing field, and we're happy to support in any way we can.
Okay. Thank you so much for the time.
Great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on to our second presentation tonight. This is fiscal year '22 Program Open Space Annual Plan. Mr. Adam Patterson, Deputy Director, Public Works.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this year's requests. This is the time of year that we start getting different requests from our local youth groups and who operate on some of these different fields and complexes throughout the county. So I've given you guys paper copies of what's presented there this evening on the screen. What you'll see are project names and descriptions, and then local sponsors moving from left to right. And then also, what we have are dollar amounts. And then we have two different colors going on, green and blue tonight. Our committee at the county here for vetting these projects consists of Kirsten O'Donnell, Pam Diaz, Ashley Workman, myself, and our chairperson is Krista Schweitzer, and she's here tonight. This is a new group. We've had a change of players since this was done previously. And so I got to thank Krista for a lot of time and effort, and it will continue after this evening, obviously. But I think this evening, I have good news to report. There wasn't much difficulty in going through these projects. The green represents some funding that's in addition to the normal Program Open Space that the county gets. It's through the fiscal year, state budget, capital budget, House Bill 590, which allocated $1 million additional to our Program Open Space funding. The little different scenario with this funding is you'll see in the one column where it's noted as a 100%. Typically with open space projects, there's a 10% local match that's required from the local sponsor. So what we did as a committee, we looked at all these different projects, and there's 16 projects listed there in the green. And as a committee, we kind of went through and recognized that probably it'd be nice for these smaller groups to be able to just be granted 100% funding for their funding requests for fiscal year '22. The projects in blue at the bottom of the page, two projects from the Board of Education and two projects from Allegheny College of Maryland, we're recommending they be handled in the traditional fashion of Program Open Space. And the funding amounts that are shown for all the projects that have been submitted, we have enough funding to cover them. The little bit extra that's not committed, there's two projects that are on the horizon here in Allegheny County. One is Greenway Avenue Stadium, and one that we're working with Allegheny College of Maryland on is called the Willbrook Outdoor Complex. We would like to perhaps kind of squirrel that money away and probably designate that to those two very important projects. So I'm here to answer any questions on this information, but it was kind of an easier year. Sometimes we got to look at trying to trim some of these projects, but we have ample funding for all 20 projects that are listed here. We have to get back to the state by July 1st with a final recommendation. So I just wanted to be able to present these projects tonight, answer any questions you may have. I'll probably have to rely on Krista for some detailed answers, but, and then come back again in two weeks and hopefully adopt the plan that's been presented here this evening.
Commissioners, any discussion?
Yes.
And I would say we all agree that the extra funding, Greenway Avenue, AC Sports Complex, and then I know Cumberland, I don't know what the status is, but they're working on some sort of skate park. So, you know, we've been in some talks with them, very preliminary. I don't think they have a cost estimate or anything yet, but I think any of those would be a good use of that extra money that we have. Okay. Gentlemen, this is just a presentation, so we don't need any action on this tonight. We'll hear it again in two weeks. Okay.
Thank you.
Adam is up again. Item three is the MV Smith Road Residential Refuge Site.
So for about a year now, our Solid Waste Board, along with staff, have been evaluating our refuge sites in the eastern part of the county, trying to create a safer and user-friendly site between our Flintstone and Old Town site. Currently, we are building a brand-new site with a county roads garage facility in Old Town, and that's that site, which should be open here by the end of the summer. We would really like to try to emulate the same type of site that we have going in at Old Town. So we evaluated improvements that we could make to the existing site at Little Orleans and the existing site at Flintstone, with the goal of trying to just create a safer and more user-friendly site, and also trying to offer the complete suite of recycling that we have available here in Allegheny County. We also were considering trying to be more cost-effective in incorporating a compactor, a compactor at one of the sites. And so we went through an entire analysis, staff did. We vetted it with the Solid Waste Management Board at two meetings. The Solid Waste Management Board back in May come back, and they fully supported a consolidated new site. The consolidated new site would be on MV Smith Road. We own property there that our county roads garage is currently located at. We have additional space to develop a new, safer site. We can offer the complete suite of recycling. We can be more cost-effective, and that location has easy access to I-68. So again, tonight was just a presentation to answer any questions you may have, and then hopefully we'd like to move forward in two weeks and take formal action on this to be able to move to the next step. A little bit of additional information about this option would be, the Flintstone site is approximately three miles to the MV Smith Road site, which equates to about a four-minute travel. The site at Little Orleans is about six miles, and it's about a seven-minute trip. The site would be open on Thursdays, Fridays, and Sundays. Currently, the Flintstone site, the Little Orleans site is open on Thursday, and the Flintstone site is open on Friday and Sunday. So we would have three days at one consolidated site. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
None. Commissioner.
Glad you looked into this, Adam. I do believe it'd probably be a better location for both. I do think in keeping the site open for three days surely ought to work in the people's favor. But let's put it out there, and if there's a way we can put this on the web and see if we get any comment back on it. But if anyone has any, so if they have any questions, they can ask you directly, because I believe there is a big advantage to this, so.
Yeah. Our primary goal is a much safer, user-friendly site.
Yes.
Quit navigating stairs. So we'll be at grade for being able to take our bagged trash and put it into a compactor.
Yeah. Very good.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
All right. Gentlemen, moving to our action agenda tonight. Item four is the manufacturer's tax exemption. This is something we have to do annually. Attorney Beeman.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. As you indicated, President Shade, this is an annual tax exemption request filed by AES Warrior Run. This is something that's provided for under state law. Back in 1996, the Commissioners adopted a county version of the same. It's a policy that basically encourages manufacturers to come to our area by allowing them tax exemption for equipment that's used for the manufacturing of goods. AES is asking for an exemption in the amount of $693,000, which is dollar-for-dollar equipment that they've used, or they purchased in this past year for manufacturing at their facility out on Warrior Run, manufacturing of electricity in this instance. So this is before you for action on their application.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item five is Resolution 21-13. It's the Rocky Gap Slots Allocation. Administrator Bennett.
Good evening, Commissioners. Excuse me. As you know, we come, Rocky Gap Local Development Council comes, the Commissioners pretty much annually asking for the spending allocation to be approved. Due to COVID, we had some delays in that process, so we're actually backtracking a little bit here and bringing the latest recommendation to you. As you know, that group is a 15-member group made up of members of our delegation, members of the community, Rocky Gap. I actually serve as the chair as that, so I'm speaking on their behalf tonight. What you have in front of you is an amended resolution, which is very nearly the same as the last one presented to you. And if you don't mind bearing with me for a second, I'll read down through how we decided to fund this. The first $10,000 of the money we received from Rocky Gap goes to fire companies in the immediate vicinity to pay for fire and rescue services at Rocky Gap. After that, 20% goes to municipalities and nonprofit organizations in the form of capital grants. 17% is going to continue to be allocated to Allegheny College of Maryland and the foundation for the scholarships. That's capped at $360,000 a year. Frostburg State will continue to get 9.25%, capped at $200,000 a year for their scholarships. 4% will remain at both Allegheny County and the Board of Education for PEGO projects. That's capped at $80,000 a year. 39.5% goes to Allegheny County Fire and Rescue Companies, capped at $865,000 a year. 2.25% goes to local law enforcement agencies for various safety devices for them. That's capped at $50,000 a year. And the remaining 4% goes to Allegheny County's EMS operation to offset our growing costs. So the group meant, we have approximately $2.4 million a year we receive from the gaming operations at Rocky Gap. This is required by state law that this group meets and convenes, comes up with a recommendation. You Commissioners are tasked with approving that and really can't make any changes to it unless there's something that would be illegal that we can't do in this recommendation. So tonight, we're just asking you to approve it. It would be for a period from January 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022. That's an 18-month spending window, and that'll then line us back up to our fiscal years. That group will reconvene before then and come up with a long-term spending plan. And last thing, currently, our percent is at 3.75% from the casino. By the next time we come to you, that amount happily will move up to 5.25% to come to Allegheny, which will be about a million-dollar increase.
Wonderful.
So tonight, we're just looking for your blessing on this, so we can continue dispersing funds. And I see David Jones from Allegheny College's Foundations in the audience. I'm sure they'll be happy to see everything continue.
Great. Well, Jason, thank you for your work for sharing that, and all the members of the committee, because I know there was a lot of meetings this year, especially with COVID and everything. You know, it was our desire to make sure the Opportunity Scholarship was taken care of, and it was, as well as the other funding priorities. So, gentlemen, I'll make the motion that we approve the Rocky Gap Slots Allocation.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Item number six, I don't want to do this one. Man.
Well, Dan.
Yeah. If we don't do it, I think he's got to stay. This is the appointment of the Allegheny County Public Works Director, Mr. Paul Cale.
Do you want to do it quicker, or is that the problem?
We'll bring out the trap.
To appoint a new Public Works Director. It's very important to me that we put a good person in this position as it is to you too. It's a very important position. When you think about this position, it needs a lot of engineering skills. We deal with water, soil, roads, bridges, buildings. There isn't anything in Allegheny County that the Public Works Department doesn't touch in everyday life, so it's a very important position. Plus personnel, I believe we're the biggest department, but one department keeps on growing quicker than us.
They're trying to catch you. Yeah.
So I think it's the biggest department. It's the personnel is a lot of issues you got to deal with, too. And of course, the public, who we all work for. So it's a difficult position, and it's good to put someone in that. I think tonight, we're looking at appointing Adam Patterson as that person. I've known Adam for 15 years. Three is the deputy director, I believe, and I think you guys have had experience with him, too. You couldn't ask for a better character. He has good knowledge, and he's a good friend. Let's see here, I think it's, so again, I think you can't pick a better person for this position. He's a little dry sometimes, but he knows, and he misses. So I highly recommend him, and I think that's the only agenda to recommend him, so I highly recommend. The only reservation I have on this at all, he'll probably do a better job than me, but we'll just leave that and see what happens. All right?
Gentlemen, agreed. Oh, Jason.
If you don't mind, just before you guys officially take action, yeah, this one's kind of bittersweet for me, because there's two friends here for me. I work with them, you know, day in, day out, multiple times a day. Paul says a good person, well, there's a good person there, so there's two. As he said, Adam's been here 15 years. Adam has sort of worked his way through the ranks. He's more than capable. Paul's got him more than ready for the job. So as much as I hate to see Paul go, he's sort of set that department up to be ready to move on, once he's ready to move on. So what we'd like to do is get Adam in place tonight. Paul's still going to be in charge until June 30th. He's got a couple of weeks yet, but we want to have Adam completely in place and ready to roll, so there's no question, no doubt. It's Adam's department moving forward. So I'm very happy to recommend Adam.
Commissioner, Caprally?
It's been a pleasure working with you, Paul. I haven't been here as long as the other guys. I was waiting for one of them to chime in and say, "Long live the king." But we sincerely wish you all the best in your retirement. Don't be a stranger, ever, please.
Mr. Brody.
Well, Paul, I've been very blessed, because I've probably known you as long as anyone. I first got acquainted with Paul back in the late 80s. It's been very, very good. When I came into this office in 2010, my background is in public works, so if anyone's been a pain in your rear end for the last 11 years, it's definitely been me. But boy, you've sure been there to help out. I've always thought that you've had the citizens of Allegheny County's best interests at heart, and you've gave 120%, and went way out of your way to help anywhere you could. Do know you stand in good standing. You've, we've had luckily, three excellent Director of Public Works, and I know Adam will make number four for that in my lifetime that I know of. But Adam, you sure got some big shoes to fill. Paul, you'll surely be missed, but I hope that we can entice you back here for a little work after you leave for a little bit, because there's lots of projects on the horizon, and people really don't understand the amount of work this building turns out with just a few engineers. If people really, really knew the nuts and bolts of what goes on in Allegheny County, they would truly be surprised, because it's nothing for Public Works to turn out probably an average of 10 to 12, 15 million dollars a year in projects every year. And that's handled by just a handful of engineers that Paul has overseen, and Adam has been doing exceptionally well with that. So we are extremely proud. We just hate to see you go. But as always, I'm always glad to see someone that can retire and retire healthy and enjoy theirself. That's everyone's end game, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Paul, it's been a pleasure over the last seven years. And Adam, I'm looking forward to working with you as director. And, you know, they say it's kind of a testament to your leadership that you leave someone who's qualified and just as good at the job or better than you are. And, you know, with Adam and Dan, and there's not going to be any lag in anything. So we're certainly going to miss you. I miss Rudd, I'm going to miss you. You know, there's no Terps left. It's all WVU guys now. So we had it balanced, and now we're... It's all WVU guys now, so we had it balanced, and now we're, you know, I'm the last one left, so. But thank you for everything, and, you know, I would put our Public Works Department up against any other county municipalities around, because they get more work done than almost anyone, and it's usually right. Well, all the time, you know. It's engineering, that's why they're dry, you know. Okay, guys. So this, our next director will be Mr. Adam Patterson. We're looking forward to working with him for many years to come. Gentlemen, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Thank you both.
Moving on to our consent agenda, we do have, Jason, go ahead and read the consent agenda, and then we have two people to speak on it.
Sure. So Commissioners, nine items on your consent agenda tonight. Item seven is make your space agreement with Allegheny College of Maryland to formalize our operations there. Item eight is the Allegheny County 2021 Priority Letter to the Maryland Department of Transportation. Item nine is the Dehaven Mason Road Water Project, authorizing the Commissioners to begin preliminary design. Item 10 is request for tax abatement in the amount of $9,240 for various old taxes that need to be written off from 2014 to 2021. Item 11 is the Scattered Sites Housing Program, acceptance of an offer of $115,000 to purchase the property at 10,00114 Hopkins Street in Ellersley. Item 12 is the 2021 Polish Mountain Hill Climb Sports Car Event Authorization. Item 13 is community promotions to remit $1,000 to Joe Mappus for the 100th Celebration and Bench Dedication to be held on August 7th, 2021. Item 14 is community promotions to remit $5,000 to the React Institute for STEM Education for RISE Youth Robotics Center. And item 15 is the Allegheny County Commission for Women's Board Appointments of Kimberly J. McMillan and Dr. Kimberly Foley-Palai, as members of the commissions, with term to expire July 1, 2022.
Great. Okay. We have Mr. Mike Fiskus, who would like to comment on item number 14.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for having me. On behalf of Robotics and Engineering in Allegheny County together, React, I'd like to say thanks for your continued support of our endeavors and of the RISE Robotics Institute for STEM Education. Our new facility, which is the former St. Peters and Ball Parish Hall, is going to provide us with a dedicated space to do advanced robotics for high school, the best high school engineering students. And we're just really looking forward to having that space and giving that opportunity to area students from all schools. Robots and other technology are very expensive, as you can imagine, but they provide our students with the ability to become technologically literate, I almost said illiterate. And those are the skills and the facility with technology is what we need our future workforce to have. So we're really excited to be a cog in that wheel to get our students to be productive members of the workforce. So I look forward to giving you all a tour of RISE, and when we get our renovations completed, I think you'll really enjoy being there. And to bribe you, so that we will be in favor of supporting our motion, whatever, we've got a T-shirt for you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Thank you. Just a mic.
Attorney Beeman, please put this on the ethics disclosure form. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And React actually also has a funding request in front of ARC right now, so we're looking forward to a positive outcome on that as well, so, great.
Counselor Nedved will take care of that.
Aye. That's the man, okay. We also have Mr. Chuck Dickin is here to speak on item 13, which is the Joe Mappus 100th Celebration.
Commissioners, thanks for allowing me to come and speak about this. I hope you don't regret it, putting a microphone in front of a radio person and letting me speak about something that I'm very passionate about. We might be here till midnight if we get into it too much. But I do want to talk to you about Joe Mappus just a little bit. On May 12th, 1921, he was born in Suffolk, Virginia. And about six years later, he was an Army brat. His father was a World War I vet, was stationed down there for the Army. About six years later, his family moved here to Cumberland, down in South End off of Virginia Avenue. And from that point on, he considered Cumberland, Maryland, his hometown. And he had his first marriage here, he joined his first bands here, he did his first radio programs, so on and so forth, on WTVO, as a matter of fact, and went on to become a very popular performer on the radio barn dance programs of the 1940s, shows like the National Barn Dance out of Chicago, Old Dominion Barn Dance in Virginia. He went to World War II, where he signed up just as a regular infantryman, was being shipped out to the Pacific Theater when they discovered that he was a fantastic guitar player, and they put him into an entertainment unit, which he did for the rest of the tour. He got out in 1946, came back and went on to, back onto radio, and then went out west with his wife Rose Lee, who was from Clear Spring, just down the road here in Maryland. And he became the leader of a television country music band on a show called Town Hall Party, which was like the western, country and western show out on the West Coast. He also became a session musician, a very in-demand one, playing on countless country albums. He played all the guitar work on Ricky Nelson's, that's one that comes to the top of my head. He went on to produce or record with television shows, with movies, all different kind of stuff, and became known, along with his wife Rose Lee, as Mr. and Mrs. Country Music. This is a person who was dedicated to Cumberland, came back all the time, had family reunions here. There are still members of the public that remember Joe from the area, and I think it's appropriate that Cumberland continue to remind people about the fact that we had an artist who played regularly with folks like George Jones, and Patsy Cline, and Loretta Lynn, and Wanda Jackson, and all these different people. If we had someone today in country music who was doing that, we'd be naming roads after them here in Allegheny County. And all you have to do is look, and I'm a huge Del McCurry fan, but look at the response that Del McCurry has done here, and he's done a lot for the community. We can't forget this important musical heritage of Cumberland. As a result of that, one of the things that we're doing is having a bench done up that'll be engraved with some stuff and some pictures and everything. The proposal, I believe, is to put it in the little parklet there at the corner of the Times News Building and by the railroad tracks is a potential location for it. We are also having a concert out at 1812 Tavern, where we're bringing in Dickerson, who was heavily influenced by Joe Mappus, and we're looking forward to that. And Brian Lundbeck, who learned to play guitar a lot from Joe Mappus, is also going to be there. And members of the Mappus family, Joe's son Jody and his daughter Lawyer coming. I don't know if Rose Lee's going to be able to make it. She's 98 years old, just retired right before COVID from being a hostess at the Country Music Hall of Fame.
Wow.
So yes, continued working down there four days a week for the longest time. She was here five years ago when we did a tribute to him, and we had five generations of the Mappus family come in for that. We're expecting a lot of them to be coming in for this as well. So we genuinely appreciate any support that you can lend to this and help us keep that musical heritage of the Cumberland area alive.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Chuck, we will try to make it on the 7th. That'd be great. I think so. Okay. Gentlemen, that's the consent agenda for this evening. Before we pass it, I would like to make a change to item number eight. That's our Priority Letter to the Maryland Department of Transportation. And, you know, government's here to fix problems, and the one on all this whole list, there's 19 priorities that doesn't seem to have a solution, is the Washington Street Bridge. And so I would move to make that number one. As you know, the bridge was struck by a CSX train in 2017, then again in 2018. They refused to assist in any way to get that fixed, and we're going to have a hearing basically in front of the Surface Transportation Board, and I look forward to a successful outcome of that case. And I think we need to have a engineered bridge ready to go on day one after we are successful with that endeavor. So, gentlemen, if we could have a motion to move number 15 up to number one, and let the Maryland Department of Transportation know that this is still a priority and a safety issue for the people of Allegheny County.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, for the whole consent agenda, items seven through 15.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Administrator Bennett.
Just one more time, I'd like to thank you guys for taking your action when appointing Adam tonight. Really, really good for the future of the department, I think. And Paul, like I said, done a great job over the years, so, and we'll get to, hopefully honor Paul if he'll agree to come back on the 24th. We'll honor him officially, but just want to thank you again. It's a good move.
Great. Attorney Beeman.
I'd just like to echo congratulating Paul on his retirement and congratulating Adam on his appointment as the director. Look forward to working with you. Paul, you're going to have some more time to read, so I expect that recommendation list to keep up.
Oh, okay. Sounds good.
Mr. Caprally?
Nothing more to add, just thanks, Paul, again, and Adam for stepping up, and we appreciate everything you guys do.
Great. Commissioner Brody.
Sir, I'll keep a brief thanks, Paul, for keeping me from getting lynched several times, and Adam.
Was that in the job?
You're charged with that now. Sir, it's good to be out in the community here, because one thing I've noticed in the last couple of weeks is we're starting to get back to a little bit of normalcy now. People are starting to come out of their shell. It's nice to see people out traveling and enjoying the weather and stuff, and I hope that the worst of all this stuff we've been through in the last year and a half is finally behind us. So with that being said, I have nothing more tonight, except.
Great. Paul, thank you for everything for many years' service, and Adam, looking forward to many more years. So, okay. Our next public business meeting will be here Thursday, June 24th, at 5:00 p.m. See you then.